Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Special Committee on Assessment Practices back to order. We'll begin. Jared, would you please take role?
Mr. Marco.
Here.
Ms. Liagie.
Here.
Mr. Bukowski.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Chairman Katina.
Here.
We also have Mr. Macy and Mr. Walton with us, and I believe Mr. Dewar on the phone.
Correct.
Okay. At this point, we have no minutes to approve. We have the Chief Assessment Officer, but I don't believe there's any amendments at this point, any further amendments on this one right now for the Chief Assessment. That's 12525-22. Correct, Jared?
That's correct.
Nothing, nothing new on that one. I believe at some point, probably for our next meeting, there will be an amendment offered to that one to basically add to the rules and duties of the Chief Assessment Officer that we'll work on and get that for the next committee meeting. So we, that's left, leaves us with 12526-22. So Jared, you want to read that one?
That's an ordinance to the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, pending Article 210 of the Administrative Code of Allegheny County entitled Assessment Standards and Practices, Section 5-210.06 entitled provisions of assessment role in order to establish a mechanism for implementation of court ordered provisions to factors used to render assessments uniform in years which no countywide assessment takes place sponsored by President Katina.
The ordinance is out there. We don't have to consider it today because obviously it didn't meet the 48-hour rule. If we feel strongly, we can obviously waive the 48-hour rule, but I just wanted to put it in everybody's hands because I'm going to schedule, like I said, another meeting, probably immediately following the next meeting we have in order to try to get all of this resolved before we go on recess, try to tie a bow around this before we go on summer recess, if that, if all of that makes sense. But at this point in time, Ms. would you come up? This is Dusty Elias Kirk. Hello, how are you?
All good.
She's obviously a little bit of an expert in this field. So even though we're not basically talking about the amendment today per se or not either, I believe, I don't believe we're going to be introducing it. Can you talk a little bit about basically what's going on and what you're seeing and how it impacts things overall?
Property owners had pending appeals over at the Board of Common Pleas. You've probably been seeing it in the paper. And they have been pending for a number of years. And so the court has a role over there at the Board of Viewers that you cannot settle for, you know, two or three years and not by 20, the last year, 2022, you have to settle everything. So a lot of the, a lot of, you know, there were other property owners and my client is, um, short and has some property, a couple, a lot of properties actually in, um, the strip and, um, so. So they, you know, we agreed to a settlement in April before the, you know, the judge reached the border and then the Commonwealth Court instead of everything about their 2022. So when your ordinance came out, we filed a 2022. So they just steps. So you're, to be what was permitted. And, um, the, we got a letter from the solicitor saying that he's not going to schedule a hearing. He's not going to schedule a hearing because, um, there was a settlement court. So what we're saying is that is creating a special class of taxpayers that is really being excluded because they, you know, they were caught in catch 22, you know? You had to settle your court case for all three years. I did bring it up. I said, I think there's a challenge to the ratio for 2022. So I, you know, I guess when you're, I guess I could have said perhaps, hey, you know, just keep kicking this down the road to 2024 or something. But, um, you know, the court wouldn't accept that because it's already been pending for three years. So, so we settled the case and now it's creating a, you know, a special class of property owners, not just mine, but others that now have pending appeals lawfully based on your ordinance at the Board of Assessment, which is not, which is not getting adhered. So all we want is a hearing.
So in your opinion, if we offered another amendment to that ordinance that we put in place already to basically put in specific language to basically address that scenario, would that work or what, what?
Yes, I think it would work because all it would be saying is that you have the right to, if you have an appeal, you have the right to have a hearing.
I mean, I would believe our original intent was to basically be open to everyone and no one should be excluded.
Right.
But it seems like unfortunately a class now is being excluded.
And all we want is a hearing. They can turn us down, right, for 2022? And then we go over to the court again. So all we're asking, we have that a valid appeal for 2022. You filed it before the deadline. Other property owners are in the same position. It's all we want. All we really want is a hearing at the Board of Property Assessment.
Mr., are you open to questions?
I am.
Okay. Councilman DeMarco.
Yeah, as an attorney, this is an area that you practice and specialize in. If you were looking, you looked at our ordinance, okay?
I did.
What would our language have to say? In other words, what I'm trying to get at is whatever we do to amend it, I want that to work and not to be challenged or not to be someone, you know, the, uh, maybe solicitor, the property assessment board say, well, this doesn't qualify or, you know, what would it have to say? What would our amendment have to say to make this, to protect these classes?
So I talked to Jared about it and do you have the language that we discussed because I?
I did not jot it down.
I did not either, but I think what we were discussing is that, um, and, you know, and I have your ordinance here, so I'm just going to grab a pen. And a hearing shall be scheduled, basically.
It was very, it was very.
It was very simple.
Yeah.
It was a simple line.
It was saying, whereas, you know, they're pending appeal for 2020.
And they had a whereas clause basically saying that we intend, the original intent was to include all classes, whether they were, yeah, all property owners.
Just want to make sure that our language works right. And then the other thing we had was she's referring to 2022. Okay. We've had Mike Suley and John Sylvester bring up the 2023. They were also bringing up, so again, whatever we do, I would like it to be ongoing. We don't want anybody, we won't really want to try to fix the problem that our property owners are found themselves in.
The auto process, the autocorrect should.
That's what you were intending through the autocorrect. The autocorrect is saying that the, the ratio will go down to what was issued by step and should autocorrect the fair market value for 2023, right?
For all tax years after. I mean, basically whatever, whatever's impacted.
Yes. So what we were saying is to have a whereas clause saying that, you know, the intent of the ordinance is to apply to all classes of property owners, you know, and prove out valid pending appeals. And so then we were going to add language basically saying.
Well, I think so.
Yeah. It basically is going to say that it, you know, it, it applies to anyone who has a valid appeal filed for 2022.
Even with pre, so.
They are previously heard. Yeah. So I think that's what we said.
Yes.
It was previously heard. Yeah. So that you could. All we want is a hearing.
And the property owners that, I mean, this is immaterial as far as we're concerned here, but are they primarily residential or are they commercial property owners?
I think, I think they're both. I think they're actually both. So there's, uh, you know, I know I've had a number of cases that were residential property owners where appeals were settled. So I think it actually applies to.
Thanks. I was bringing it up because obviously when you're dealing with the value of some commercial properties downtown, it can make a considerable difference. And we've seen the city of Pittsburgh School District, the Pittsburgh Public School District, they missed a quarter number of times, tried to delay. You know, these folks have been able to see the, you know, problem of, you know, taxes because they're fighting that one. Again, I just, you know, I want to make sure we're doing it right.
Right. And then also still laying residential property owners, getting their, because I know that they've been fighting tooth and nail and I get it because, you know, they're trying to protect the values for their school district, but you all are trying to protect the property owners. Yeah.
Trying to do the right thing.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Councilman Paul Mary.
Take an amendment to an amendment to an amendment to an amendment to an amendment. Do we do that? You're God, right? When are we going to get this done? That's my question.
Wrapped up for the 11, our meeting for the 11. Vote on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Bukowski.
Yes, President Katina. I only, um, I'm a little bit aware of this because there was an article in the newspaper that I had a chance to read. And, you know, I am very reluctant right now with the limited information that I have to support this. I mean, our entire system relies on contracts freely entered or agreements freely entered into to have some, you know, binding nature to them. And it is my assumption, and admittedly it is an assumption, is that the parties to this agreement are not under excessive duress and, and forced to sign something that they really disagreed with. And so now to come back later and say, oh, I freely entered into this agreement, but now I have a chance to get an even better deal, so throw that one out. It, it just goes against everything that our system in this country is based on.
Well, I want to say that, uh, the agreement, at least for my property owners, were paying more taxes, higher taxes based on their purchase price. It was a settlement where they were agreeing to pay higher taxes. And so what, with the ratio, they actually now are paying higher taxes than they should have been paying because of the ratio being applied on 81.1 instead of 63.5. So they're not, you know, I, I think that they're agreeing with the market value. What is not fair is that the ratio was wrong and we had no way of knowing that and, and anyone did in before the court ordered it in November. And this, the Commonwealth Court now, uh, determined, had step determine what was right. No one, it's not like they're trying to get a better deal. They're trying to be treated fairly like everyone else.
I think they settled on bad information that put it successfully.
Yeah.
They settled on all the information they had at the time.
And they wanted to buy that house. They wanted to live there.
People bought the house and they settled. Yeah, that's right.
Did you hear that, Councilman Bukowski?
I did, but I, I still don't see where that changes the fundamental question of just because now they find out that, oh, I could have gotten a better deal on that car if I had waited a month. Nonetheless, if you freely enter into an agreement and sign it, that has to have some binding station to it, in my opinion. But admittedly, I'm working on very limited information.
Councilman DeMarco.
One party misrepresented the information as part of that settlement discussion, and that was the county with the inflated C O R. So while her, her clients may have freely entered into this, it was based upon information that wasn't correct. And so this isn't, uh, hey, let me try to get a better deal. This is, hey, let's fix or right the wrong and fix what should have been in place at the time that settlement was made instead of operating off of the inflated number that they had to work with. That makes sense?
Well, I, I just want to say it's new information because, um, the, but only information that people had was what was issued by step. And now step has issued new information. And so that new information, uh, shows that, you know, we were relying on information that the court has deemed to be incorrect. So it's not just trying to get a better deal. It's trying to be treated the same as everyone else who now has the right to file an appeal. And all we really want is a hearing. That's all we're asking for.
Sorry.
Then we can present our evidence.
You are?
Yeah, my name's Kevin Brown. I'm an attorney. I'm a friend of Mike Solis. I've known him for 27 years. I've done Dusty for a long time and I do a boatload of assessment appeals. And to borrow from the analogy about purchasing a car, this is not unlike you pay 10 grand for a car, understanding that the mileage on the odometer was 100,000.
An analogy.
You come to find out later, it's 200,000. Now, how it ended up really being 200,000, was it an accident or on purpose? That's what I'm talking, that's what we're all talking about is that you now find out not, it's, you didn't find out you could have had a better deal because somebody really was willing to take less. There's actually patently totally relied upon false information that Dusty and many of the other attorneys who negotiated these things for 22 just was wrong information. And so for it to be a valid contract, everybody has to be in an equitable position. And if there's information that's been withheld or mistaken or whatever, you can't consider that to be just a valid contract and, oh, well, too bad. It's not the same thing. It's just, well, you could have had a better deal.
Thank you. Thank you for that analogy. Councilman Bukowski, any other questions?
Uh, yes. And I think I've voiced in the past that I am really reluctant to create a law for everything. I wonder, are, is there any other remedy available to these people outside of us creating a new law?
Any?
Well, I, the, we've, all we, we've written to the board and said, Board of Property Assessment now, and asked, we have, we filed an appeal, please schedule a hearing. And we got a letter back saying that we could not schedule a hearing because of the prior settlement. So we, we trusted the legislation that you gave us saying that you could file an appeal for 2022. All we want is a hearing. So we can present our evidence and the Board of Property Assessment can decide that just like any other appeal that's pending, they can say no, they can say yes, they can say, we'll reduce it somewhat. All we want is a hearing.
Councilman DeMarco.
The, the one thing that I'd ask is that because these settlements were all signed off on by the course, I believe Judge Ward had excited as well.
Yes.
So in, in Board of Viewers, so, Peter, are you, is there any plan to just go back to them to say, hey, you know, this all changed? You know, we based this, this, and so now it changed. Any plan to do that?
Well, that, you know, that is something that we're considering, but, uh, you know, I'm going to speak for people who aren't like, most of whom are not my clients, the residential property owners. Right? And, you know, how would they even do that? They would have to hire an attorney to go back to court to get this, to file some petition to open or something. And, um, you know, like for my clients, you know, they're commercial and maybe, and I had to explain to them that they thought I was, I had to call them last week and I said, well, I don't have a hearing for you because the Board of Property Assessment says I can't have one. I said, I'm going to have to spend more time and money for you to get this. And they understood and they said, okay, but what about all the residential property owners who were in the same position? So, I mean, we're considering going back to court, but the easiest thing is we filed an appeal for 2022 based on your, relying on your ordinance, saying that property owners can file an appeal. So we're just want a hearing. I mean, just have a hearing in the normal course.
Councilman Bukowski, any other questions?
Only a comment. So it seems as if there are other remedies other than council creating an ordinance.
Going.
I mean, the fact that they're not in, the fact that they're not cheap or easy or convenient, that's not really, I think, an issue that falls within our, our realm. But there is a remedy available to them. And I'm reluctant, as I've mentioned a number of times, to interfere with, you know, agreements. If one party to the agreement, uh, you know, acted in bad faith, the courts should have remedies for that.
Okay. Council, Councilmember Filagi?
Yes, thank you, President Katina, and, and also for clarifying, um, Mr. Brown. I, Mr. Brown and I know each other as well, and I'm completely aligned with his analogy of the, uh, car dealership and that, um, bad faith or mistake was the, was the premise on which these people bargained. And I feel that nullifies, quite frankly, the bargain. It would, it would in many courts of law. I don't think that we should make taxpayers have to go through basically the penalty of going back into court. Yes, it is an expense, one that is unnecessary if this is within our power, and I believe it is. The only thing that I would suggest that if it is going to be cumbersome to do an amendment, that could we send a letter, President Katina, on behalf of council, some sort of a letter of instruction to the board clarifying our intent to see if that would be enough. Rather than amending, again, that would be my only suggestion, but I would be in support clearly of allowing these, um, county taxpayers to get the benefits of the lower C O R. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fred, do you think?
I just, as a solicitor, I don't like to comment too much, but I'll say a few things. Any contract or settlement can be set aside for fraud expenses. That's ingrained in the law. I think from what I'm being told here, there was a mistake. Hard to quibble about that word because they were relying upon a C O R. And I know that when you go into these Board of Viewer things, the C O R becomes very critical as a calculation. And we do have a new C O R. What the council wants to do is another matter up to it, but I think you have the power to amend the legislation as we discuss.
Do you think a letter?
Want this to happen. I would be reluctant to rely upon a letter to the office via property assessment because they can just ignore us. If it's in an ordinance, it's in the course of the department.
Councilman DeMarco.
I think if you sent a letter and then they ignored it, then you can always pass the ordinance.
Sure.
Let me ask you this question. And would, I mean, and I don't know if this is online, if you sent a letter to Judge Ward, okay, at the courts, explaining the situation and asking her whether they consider opening those folks up to allow them or changing this settlement without having to go through a court action on an individual type basis.
Unfortunately, Judge Ward really can't do anything without a court action for her.
She wouldn't want to do it. You could do a class action court action. She could, you could do that.
Well, that's pretty cumbersome because the way class actions work, you have to certify a class. They have to all be similar in terms of which way it did that she could take it. Just think it's, that's really, I mean, I don't, I don't know, Kevin's clients, you have appeals pending already, right?
I don't have, bulk of my clients are residential. And I do not have any who are in this situation where we settled something for 22 and then went ahead and took advantage of the reopen in the window for people.
Yeah.
So I can't speak to them specifically, anyone that's a client of mine specifically about that. But I will say that especially residential, e- even people who spent six, seven, eight hundred thousand for a place, it's their place, whereas most of Dusty's clients that you're referring, they're, they're businesses. This is a business thing. Dusty's right. It would be super duper cumbersome to go through all the legal regular law to reopen this or still, it's like opening up a summary judgment or whatever that I, I could probably say, antidotely speaking, at least 99% of the residential clients just won't want to go through doing that because it's not worth it unless orders going to run around doing it for free.
They ignore the city's festival and just do it then.
Councilman Walton, do you think?
Just listening. And trying to grasp the difficulties that we face irrespective of, uh, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm really a tough one. I mean, yeah.
I'm really trying to sort my way through it.
Who do we have on the phone?
Councilman Dewar, Councilman Nakrati Chakis, Councilman Bennett.
Councilman Dewar, any questions or comments?
No, no questions, Mr. Katina. I apologize. I couldn't be there in person today. Uh, you know, very quickly wanted to thank Ms. Kirk for coming in and continuing to add to a lot of the robust discussion we've had on this topic. You know, additionally, I, I want to say, you know, we are legislators here. We legislate where we should be doing that. Um, and this error, you know, whether, you know, as we've talked about, you know, whether it was a mistake or it was done on purpose, it doesn't matter. It's up to us to fix it. And if this amendment would go further to helping the taxpayers who were burdened by this make it more cost effective and timely for them to remedy this, we should absolutely do it. That's our job, why we ran for, for this office. And it's what, it's what we're, what we, what we should be doing. So in respect to my colleagues who think that we can look towards the administration or other sources, whether it be the courts or the administration to fix this problem, or if it's us sending a letter, with all due respect, the time for those things is well passed. This is a significant problem. We've had a number of meetings on this issue. And for the taxpayers and homeowners who were affected by this, you know, we need to act in their best interest. And whether it's, you know, the, the, this amendment we're, we're discussing, the other pieces of legislation we're discussing, all of these things need to be on the table and should be a priority for every member of this body. So that's it. That's all I got. Thank you, President Katina.
One thing is that, B, I mean, I read your ordinance. I think it's like pretty damn clear. You just shouldn't be able, and we shouldn't be here, okay? But B. Har has said, well, I see some wiggle room here. So really what you're doing, it's kind of shouldn't be necessary. But okay, since they brought up this little issue, you're just basically clarifying, yeah, we even mean in this situation. And that's it. So then if people are still refuses, at least you now have the power of an ordinance. And then if they refuse, then if it's got to go to court, not suggesting anybody do anything. But at least now it isn't just, well, I'm, I'm interpreting it this way. It's like flat out, here's the issue. This is really what we meant. And now you're saying no. Now you really have something actionable to go to court and then get the thing uncorked for everybody.
Go ahead here. Councilman Macy, I'm sorry, I skipped.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with, uh, Councilman, uh, Dewar. This is what we're here to do. This is our job. What we're elected to do. And, um, there's no sense, as Dusty said, kicking sand on the road anymore by writing nice, warm and fuzzy letters. I don't think that's going to help.
I think what's important.
What's important is that we act as, as a team, as a legislative body and do what we're supposed to do for our, uh, our constituents and the corporations. I don't know where that puts the school district, but that's going to be their battle, not ours.
Councilmember Bennett, any questions or concerns?
Thank you, President Katina. I have no questions. I'm just listening. Thank you.
Councilmember Nakrati Chakis, any questions or concerns?
Um, no questions or concerns. I do agree with my colleagues.
Um, no questions or concerns. I do agree with my colleagues that if there's need for clarification or all for that.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to say? Councilman Paul Mary?
I didn't mean to make light of this. You know, the fact is, we just keep dragging this on and dragging this on. It's a point is that we have to do an ordinance, an amendment to that ordinance. Then let's just do it and and get moving here. I get very impatient with this meeting after meeting after meeting, and we don't seem to ever get anything done.
Oh, I think this new, we didn't know that the F B par was going to basically do what they're doing. I think we were kind of surprised by that happening.
Okay, so now we're not surprised.
Yeah, so now it's, now the amendment needs to be written and we just need to introduce it and go from there. You've done our. Councilman Bukowski?
Idea of the scope of what we're talking about, a number of property owners, the assessed values of this in total, do we have any idea what we're spending?
What we're spending as far as what do you?
What's the open air cost maybe?
Agreed to pay this much money and now you're saying no because of whatever reason.
What revenue may be lost, maybe?
Right.
Okay.
Along with, I would say that once, property owners. And a breakdown in commercial versus residential would help there as well.
Councilman Walton?
Notwithstanding what the cost potentially may be, we have to do what is both legal and responsible. Um, that's, that's our obligation. But notwithstanding that, we need to try to have some cost, some, some understanding of what the impact may be.
Well, I, I don't know if there's a way to know that in an easy way. Let me try.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
This is not some formulaic thing, like if you pass this ordinance, magically, all of those orders that Judge Ward signed are going to change. I guess I'm wrong, but I'm sitting here thinking if I actually had a client involved in this, it would just basically reopen 2022 to still be negotiated. Am I right about that?
Yeah, that's the point. That's the point. We, I don't know how many people have worked in the position of my client. I don't know that. Or how many residential property owners are in the position. I, I know the ones that I've helped and represented, but all we're asking for is a hearing on 2022. So we have to present our evidence. The Board of Property Assessment has to hear it. They have to make a decision. And they can, you know, and whatever happens after that, then you know, people can accept the decision or file an appeal to court. So to your concern about the school district, they could file an appeal from that decision to court. And then we, you know, but people would be back for 2022. They could settle or they could go on.
Councilwoman?
I fully understand what Dusty has said. Um, and I agree with both of them. That it may be problematic in trying to put a dollar value on it. But at a minimum, if we can have some sense of what the number of properties would be impacted by that, it may give us some sense of scope.
We're gonna try to get that. He gave us the 20. I don't know if he gave us all that data. I can't remember. Um, any other questions or concerns? Okay, we'll get Councilman Futols.
Do you have any foresight of what kind of impact we're gonna have with these large skyscrapers in the city of Pittsburgh that may do appeals for lack of tenants? I mean, we're talking big money now, but then it's not a homeowner. We're talking major tax.
Are you, are you talking for 2023 or 2022? Um, are you asking about, I was here talking about the 2022, but if you're talking about people who are filing in 2023 because the value of their properties have gone down.
I think you're, you're talking about moving forwards.
Yeah, moving forward, I'm more or less.
I think that, and this is just my opinion, is that, you know, people still have their leases. So the full impact of it may not be known for some time because, you know, people still have to pay on their lease, even if they're
Buildings are empty.
Buildings are empty unless they renegotiate something with their landlord or something. But.
Vacancy rate, I'm sorry to interrupt, but vacancy rate doesn't, doesn't impact the value of the property.
It does.
It does. Oh, yeah, it does.
It does. Because if, you know, if you have a, a building that's 60% occupied and 40% of it is vacant, it's going to be worth a lot less because there's less income coming into the property. If it was 80% occupied, there'd be more rent coming in. And so that's one of the ways to evaluate, but, you know, how, there's three ways to determine the value of a property, the income approach, and that's, you know, based on rent and net operating income, the sales comparison approach, and the cost approach. The cost approach is really for newer buildings. But when properties start trading, you know, in the marketplace, you'll see that prejudice are going down. And because they're gonna say, well, this lease is up in three years or I'm worried that there won't be anyone to take this place. So values should start from that way.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions, then we're gonna go into recess. Thank you, everyone, for your time today. Thank you, Dusty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thanks for the listen.